Good evening and welcome to our regular business meeting. We're going to open up by having a, the invocation be a silent prayer. And as we pray, I will ask that you would pray for the Mendoza family. He is, Officer Mendoza is the officer who lost his life. I think it was yesterday. So please pray for his family and his friends and our Clayton County family as well. It be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business would be to conduct roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Madam Clerk, all present and accounted for.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April 20th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any members have any amendments?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number five to be on the regular agenda.
All right. There's a motion to pull item number five, Viva Finance Partnership, which is being presented by Human Resources. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Proud to move in second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
I'd like also to pull number 14 for regular agenda as well.
All right. Is this 2021-86A?
Correct.
Resolution opposing an election integrity act and any other bills that will decrease or limit all eligible citizens from voting. Are you asking, put this?
On the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion is to place resolution 2021-86A on the regular agenda. I will second the motion. Are there any questions? All right, so those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I would like to hold item 16, which is a recommendation for award for fencing. The RFP that was sent out is for a product that is not going to be conducive for us price-wise. And I will continue to do some research on that. There is a better product for much less of a cost, so we need to go ahead and hold that item.
Okay, you want to hold it. Okay, the recommendation is to hold item 16, Recommendation for Award, ITB-21-10, fencing at the River Community Center. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Davis, second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
Not to hold it, but item number four, I would like for us to go back and take a look at that again. I will be presenting to the board for consideration some proposals specifically for our law enforcement, for our peace officers that would be in line with best practices, especially considering this climate and in light of the most recent debt. Been on this board now only five years, but have been involved with the county almost 16, and the same conversations keep coming up. And I think that we need to address those with getting proper benefit for those that are putting their lives on the line for us, particularly at a time that most other jurisdictions have a difficult time putting folks in those positions. So I'm not saying that we need to hold it, but I just want the board to be aware and make HR aware that will be additional recommendations for Hartford, and that shouldn't be a problem for them to give us some quotes back on this initiative.
Okay. Any others? All right, hearing none, this time I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. The speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any despairing remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board. It shall last no more than 30 minutes.
Ms. Teresa Tally.
My name is Teresa Tally Hampton, Georgia. My mask says unity, because I think that's what we need to do. I emailed Commissioner Gregory, Commissioner Hambrick, and Commissioner Franklin on April 15, 2021 regarding the beautification program. They all agreed and stated it wasn't working. Our concern was, why? Did we have the right committee in place for this project? Entering into Clayton County is unattractive. It has been this way for a while. We would like some improvements. I'm not saying there hasn't been any improvement, but are these improvements only for us? We want others to see our new buildings and accomplishments, but how can they, with the same look, enter? Once we change the outer look, everyone will talk about their inner look. We need to change the mindset of big businesses that would consider or reconsider giving us a chance. This is what we want. We want to say our opinion matters. Does it really? A new beginning. I'm not trying to undermine anyone on this panel. We just want to see a change. This is not about who was voted in. This is about leadership, working together as a team. We shouldn't have to come before the board with the same concern each month with no progression. All we're asking, we just want to see a change. And I don't think that's a lot for us. When you go downtown Atlanta, it's so beautiful. When you go into Gwinnett County, it is so nice. Cobb County, Henry County, Bed Bill, Peachtree City. I'm not trying to undermine anyone on the panel. I just want them to, can we at least have some pretty flowers or some pretty trees? But in order to do this, we need a landscaping company to do it, not the volunteers, not the inmates. We thank them for what they're doing, but they can't do the big job. And the big job is landscaping companies. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are working towards that end, so thank you for your comments. Terry Boomer. And as Mr. Boomer's coming forward, let me just remind everyone, you are always welcome to come up and give your three minutes worth of comment, but we will have public hearing for the zoning requests later on on the agenda. So those of you signed up that want to talk about the, any zoning requests, then you'll have ample opportunity to do it at the end of the agenda. Otherwise, again, if you still like to come forward, then that's your three minutes. So just wanted to make sure I make you aware of that. Sir? Okay. Sam Williams.
Good evening, Sam Williams, Clayton County, 5465 Emily Circle. I'm not sure if I'm speaking at the right time or not. I'm speaking on behalf of the, of the number 40 on the agenda.
Yeah, we're zoning. As a zoning request?
Yes.
So yeah, you can wait until we have a public hearing on it, or if you like, you can speak your piece now. So totally, it's your three minutes.
I guess coming, I didn't know what I would want to say, but really just listening to the other lady just stepped up and kind of made me think about something. I say, when we first moved to, I've been to Clayton County for 21 years. The area I live in, I tell everybody, I'm never leaving here. This is my home. I'm here forever. I remember it was a two-lane highway. Clayton County came in and made it four. Okay, man, looks great. You got sidewalks, you can enjoy the scenery, walk up the street, walk back, nice view. Like, man, why didn't they do something with the grass? And so you know what? Us as a community said, man, let's go find the landscape. We found the landscape, we charged us, I don't know, $6,000. We raised $6,000 and we did, it's not our property, it's the county property. Hey, let's make our entry look good. The county, hey, they don't mind, as long as it looks good. Put trees, did the things this young lady here was just saying, but we did it out of pocket. Okay? We get up on Saturday morning, we can walk sidewalks, my wife walk, enjoy everything, enjoy the community, enjoy the neighbors. Now, get it, go in my car, go across 42, and I'm like, man, what is this stuff going for, all these salvage yards? I'm like, man, I bet you people around here didn't see this coming. Savage yards everywhere, they call it repair shops. And all of a sudden, we get a community right in front of us, they call it, now they call it a repair shop. Like, man, what is he building? Kind of find out. He's building one of these things called a repair shop, where they have just as many cars as a salvage yard would have, and it looks like a salvage yard. So you bring this here to the community that we want to be in, we don't want to leave, we want to stay in, we want to enjoy it. This is our house, this is our home. And people from other communities that don't care nothing about, not just Ellenwood, they don't care about Clayton County. So they come in, they throw whatever into our community like it's a dump, and then they leave. They go home into their nice, beautiful community. Then we got to get up and like step over all this here, eyesores everywhere in the community. So I'm like, all we asking is not allow them to build this in our community. Take it somewhere else. Take it to one of them other beautiful counties, Henry County, or somewhere else, but not in our county. Bring something else that'll benefit what's around us. I mean, okay, if it was a, I don't know, some other type of business that fit the community, okay, we'd like going by and watching that, but go, get on that road, go across 42, and watch what these folks have done.
I'm sorry, sir, for your time. Thank you, sir. Mickey Garver.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garver. Linda Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Jones, and I live in unincorporated Ellenwood, Georgia. Commissioners, I strongly believe that the more we give, the more is given to us. So as President of Progressive Seniors, which is a small senior citizens group, I remind them of our vision, which is to provide enrichment that supports community outreach. In the last five years, we have made donations to organizations in Clayton County, including Sudo Elementary School, Church Street, Smith Street, the House of Dunn, Head Start, Kenship Center, Forest Park Rec Center, Travelers Rest Missionary Church, Senior Center Meals on Wheels, with positive results. And thank yous from all except one. A few days before I went to this office, I called and asked if they accepted personal care toiletry items. I was told yes, so I scheduled an appointment for the afternoon of Wednesday, March 31st. That day was messy, rainy, and cold, but I kept my word by driving 24 miles round trip to the location. When I arrived to the glass-covered front door and wall, no one was at the reception desk, so I found it on the door. A lady came and talked to me through the glass door. I told her that I was there to deliver donations. She did not respond, so I gave the name of the person whom I talked with. Then she said, "Back up your car," and then she walked away without another word. So I went to the car, backed up, and opened the trunk. I patiently waited in the rain. About two minutes later, the second lady came outside without a word, walking toward my car. So I asked, "Who are you?" She gave me her name and proceeded by removing about $250 worth of toiletries with tote bags from the trunk, placing them on a cart with my help. When finished, I let the trunk down. She started walking away and then asked the name of the organization to give me a letter of acknowledgement. I asked, "Can I come inside?" The sign says, "With mask and previous appointments, constituents can come inside." She said, "You were late." Quickly opened the door, pushed the cart inside, and closed it. I walked back to the car and was about to get inside when I saw another bag of toiletries. So again, I walked in the rain to the door where there's no one sitting at the desk and waited. After about five minutes, the second lady came back out and gave me the letter. Never did she smile or say two words, "Thank you." I was very disappointed and told her, "I am going to report you." Commissioners, how would you feel if you had been treated so rudely by two black women who work for Clayton County government? This is unacceptable behavior. However, I'm hopeful, hopeful is the key word here, that this will never happen to another human being who makes donations to the Senior Center Meals on Wheels program. Please remind these people of how they should respond to the residents that come to give them, not take, but to give them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trust and know that that's not behavior we definitely would condone, so thank you for sharing those words with us. This looks like Jesse or Jerry Blackshear?
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Jesse Blackshear, 5459 Emily Circle, Ellenwood. And just to echo on the BOC 200066, just to comment, we have a beautiful neighborhood. We appreciate if the commissioners haven't been, if you would come by and just take a look at our neighborhood, that you would consider as if it was your neighborhood concerning the automobile. Just to re-echo, we just don't want things, we want to keep it a beautiful place. So just consider it as if it was your home, taking consideration that, you know what, just take care of us like we take care of you, paying our taxes, and just take the time to work with us and see. Sometimes footwork is better than far as of talking, so just consider what we're saying and please understand that we're not against the people that are trying to do it, we just want something better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stacy Simmons. Okay. You're welcome. This looks like Terry Bentley Bailey. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, there, commissioners. I had a feeling you might have trouble reading my handwriting. My name is Terry Bailey. My address is 3400 PG Road Northeast, Suite 15, 15 Atlanta, Georgia 30326. I'm here on behalf of a client in Clayton County as well as multiple neighbors. I understand that we are going to have public hearing on the zoning matters a little later. Some of you may or may not have received my email earlier that I also shared with staff. I do believe that regarding items 31, 32, and 33, we do know that 31 is for decision only, but I just want the commissioners to keep in mind that we still are scheduled to have public comments on 32 and 33. And I believe 31 deals with amendment of future manuse plan, but I believe that 32 and 33 was deal with the rezoning and the conditional use permit are essentially the most important items to, and we wanted, we have a few more arguments, a few more facts you wanted to share for your knowledge. There's been, now at this point, there's 640 signatures in opposition, and we just think it's important that we flesh out the details dealing with this. I mean, this is, this is an application that was recommended for now, not just by the planning staff, but also by the planning zoning board. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that as you guys go into decision for the first item, that we do want to, it's going to be public comment going forward, and I think you should probably address a lot of the majority of the issues that we still have at that time. So thank you for your thoughtful attention, and we'll probably speak a little later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frankie Boyd.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Frankie Boyd, resident of 5530 Emily Circle in Seven's Creek Subdivision. And the reason I'm here pertains to the rezoning request at 3192 Penola Road, police and automobile repair mechanic shop. I am adamantly opposed to this request, along with the rest of my neighbors and friends. I've been resident in Clayton County for more than 20 years now, roughly 26, 27 years. And I plan to stay in Clayton County. But frankly, I've been in Clayton County longer than I've been anywhere. And I plan to stay right where I am, but I want to improve my neighborhood and I can diminish it. And if you all were to grant this request, that would be the first step, I think, towards the diminishing of our property and our property values. So we strongly urge you to please deny this request for permit for rezoning at 3192 Penola Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public.
Next aboard, we entertain the consent items, which are items 1 through 4, 6 through 13, and number 15.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions on any other items? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
First item is item number five, Viva Finance Partnership, Human Resources, on behalf of Clayton County employees, Human Resources requesting for the board's consideration of a partnership with Viva Finance to provide financial services to Clayton County employees.
Ms. Hammonds.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Gregory, Commissioners Davis, Franklin, and Hambrick. Also, good evening to Clayton County citizens from Human Resources. Before I get started, I would like to acknowledge that we have Human Resources Manager Karen Bohannon and Assistant Manager Angela Woods attending tonight. At the work session, I provided a presentation to the board regarding a possible partnership with Viva Finance. The board expressed concerns and had questions. Subsequently, I have provided a question and answer to the board that addressed the concerns that were brought forth. Also, after speaking today with an industry leader who serves on a national level, additional questions were posed, and I provided another set of Q and As to the board for their review. At this particular time, Human Resources has nothing else to present, but I would like to ask Viva to come up to the podium to answer any additional questions that the board may have. We have two representatives from Viva here tonight who can answer any additional questions that the board may have.
Okay, well, when we get to that part, we'll have them come up and answer, should we get a motion to second on it. So is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Commissioner Gregory, second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
I'm looking at even question number one, where they've spoken about APRs, but they have an interest rate of 11.99 to 26.62. I think that APR, I'd like to know, in their words, what that APR is on the same type of loan as a payday loan. Now payday loans, from what I understand, are not legal in the state of Georgia. So with an APR with a interest rate that high, what is the APR on that?
So if those representatives would, please come forward.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you all for having us. Thank you, members of Clayton County. So with the APRs that we charge relative to what here in the state of Georgia is a major problem, is title pawn lending. When you drive down on Jonesboro Road, all the way here to the county office, you see that on both sides of the road, we are plagued here with title pawn lenders who charge 187.5% effective interest annually. And on those loans, individuals are not allowed to pay principal and interest, rather, they have to pay the entire balance down, or the balance is therefore rolled if they don't pay the amount.
I'm sorry, sir, to cut you off, but did you state your names for us?
My name is Hodges Mark Alder. I'm the co-founder of Viva Finance.
Thank you for having us. My name is Garrett Utter. I'm the vice president of Viva Finance.
Sorry, apologize again for.
Of course. Yes, and so title pawn lending is the number one addressable concern here in Clayton County in the state of Georgia. And payday lending is in fact illegal, but more so, title pawn lending is a major concern. Even when comparing to other market considerations like credit cards, delinquent credit card debt can charge you up to 36% effective interest, and other lenders are able to charge up to 61% effective interest for loans above $3,000. And so when considering the alternatives, there are predatory loans that are plaguing the community here in Clayton County and in the rest of the state of Georgia. We were founded on the mission to build an inclusive financial system and think that our solution can help people to build their credit and to ultimately be included in the financial system.
I still haven't got an answer to my question. From an APR, if somebody borrowed $100, 24 months, what's the APR going to be on that?
For Viva Finance loan?
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely. Those rates that you see of 12% to 26%, those are the effective APRs on a Viva Finance loan. And our loans are commonly used to refinance other debt, including those title pawn loans.
And so we have two loan products, a $500 loan, which has a 0% simple interest, it's just a $25 origination fee, and the term is five months. So with that term of five months, the effective interest rate, the effective APR on that is 19%. But when comparing what you can get for a $500 loan with Viva, that 19% versus 187.5% with a title pawn lender, it seems to be a great option for individuals who would like to build and repair their credit or may be experiencing a financial emergency.
Who, who is your backing source? What bank is backing these Viva loans?
So we raise money with a combination of equity and debt. We have a private debt fund from San Francisco, California Keystone National. They provided us with a $15 million line of credit, and then we subsequently raised equity, the leading institutional investors Acumen Fund, based out of San Ramon, California, and they were the leader in our seed series round.
Okay. And also, I understand the whole payday lending model, I understand with our title bonds here in the county, but I do understand this, that most of these services come into a high minority segment of a community with a low, with a median credit score. I guess what makes us so different that we are entitled to this service?
Absolutely. It's not necessarily that it's something different about here versus somewhere else. It's not necessarily that it's something different about here versus somewhere else. A third of Americans have a sub-six-fifty credit score. And for Viva Finance, the weighted average credit score is five-seventy. And so we are able to provide people with an option if they have below a six-hundred credit score. If you have below six-hundred and you want to go to a bank or a credit union, there really are a lack of other market alternatives. And so we are trying to provide a solution for Clayton County, but also for other individuals. And we serve a number of K through twelve school system employees throughout the southeast and also county government employees throughout the southeast. And so more so, we're trying to expand our mission and our impact.
What does Viva's board look like as far from a racial makeup?
The board right now is three members, it's white, three white members, two males and one female.
Okay, thank you.
We also are involved with Operation Hope informally here in town. My brother, who unfortunately is unable to join, he volunteered at Operation Hope for three summers and is very involved with John Hope Bryant there. And that's really where the inception of the mission came, is from his time when he was at Operation Hope. And that is something that is a goal of ours is to absolutely honor board to have members of the African-American community and other races as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Commissioner.
I know the last time Ms. Ambles brought this, and with me, I mean, this is about giving our employees some dignity. I know it's not the best, and probably if they had, you know, an eight-fifty credit score, they wouldn't need it. But there are times when people just actually need it, and they don't want the coworkers to know they're going to pay it back and so forth. And I just don't, I'm not getting all into how much interest they're going to pay. I'm just going to, you know, hope that, you know, pay it back and maintain some dignity. If your car break down, then everybody at the job doesn't know that your car broke down and that you can't get it fixed. And sometimes we just have to operate like this. I mean, we can't get into whether we're going to protect them from, you know, getting a twenty-nine percent interest rate versus, well, I hope it's not twenty-nine, but twenty-nine percent interest rate versus something else. It's just sometimes it's about, you know, allowing our employees to maintain some dignity while they still work, come to work, and try to reestablish themselves, whether it's unemployment, you know, or medical emergency or something like that. So I'm in favor of using this service, a service like this.
Well, I'll just add that it's an option.
Right.
Totally voluntarily.
Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
That is totally an option that our employees can utilize in times of hardship or if they just need some money to help them over a hump or a bad spot. So I understand and agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Gregory. Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, and I do apologize for stepping on your toes. But let me say this, I've been in the industry of employee benefits for over seventeen years now. Been certified in that industry and have worked for the largest corporations. We have worked for years to make sure that there are voluntary benefits in place that would allow for employees to be able to pay those out-of-pocket expenses through reputable companies that are actually vetted and receive a BBNT rating, as well as we offer opportunities for them via a part of a credit union. As a county, we have to be very careful of getting in the area of banking. We have to run a government. We also want to make sure, honestly, that HR is just deducting the right amount for employee benefits, which are standard. And that includes health insurance, that we get those things right. When we get into talking about, we don't want to worry about the interest rates and so forth, we're putting ourselves in a place of liability. If our employees have issues, they're our credit unions. And to this company, I applaud you for being a great startup, but that's what I've read. For a company to only been in existence since 2019, there's no FDIC information on you all. The Better Business Bureau, there's no rating there. Then I just caution our board of stepping outside of our lane. Our lane is to make sure employees are paid on time, they're treated fairly, and they receive regular employee benefits such as health insurance and the other voluntary benefits. This space is just a space that I don't feel that we should be operating in. I'm not comfortable with us operating in it. And again, I wish you gentlemen all the best, but the fact that you want to offer this to just the twenty-five-hundred employees is not going to make the predatory lenders go away in our community. And when we continue to make decisions based upon, based upon a lower mark, you know, saying that our employees don't have this or that, well, we don't know what they have. We don't know what's going on in their households. So let them have that personal decision, make that personal decision. Let them go to a credit union who will lend to those with a lower credit score. But personally, I agree with Commissioner Davis on this. I'm concerned that this is even being offered with this company being so new and again, being outside of the lane of us as policy makers. We have many other things we need to discuss.
Can I say one more thing, Chairman? And also, and I'm going to definitely piggyback on what Commissioner Franklin just said about we need to stay in our lanes here. We are to be, we are to add quality of life to our citizens. I don't believe we should be in the subprime banking industry of trying to assist our county employees in that. I understand we go through hardships, and I will agree with Commissioner Gregory, and we feel for them. But for us, we need to, we don't need to be in that industry where we are giving a subprime product.
Director Ambles? Couple of questions, reference to the company. Have they been properly vetted?
Well, they have in regards to the... And then let me say this too, I've been an employee of Clayton County for twenty-two years. And I'm also a citizen, District Three. Commissioner Franklin is my commissioner and is doing exactly what I expect her to do as a citizen, to make sure that we are protecting Clayton County citizens. For that, I applaud. You know, we are living in a totally different era than we used to live in. And some of the, some of the, some of the products, some of the mindset of leadership, what, in other words, what happened and was effective years ago is not effective today. And I'll give you an example of that. We have many employees, and I, as the HR director, I have my boots on the ground working with our employees. I'm the one that they call when they have various issues and different challenges that we are trying to work out. One of the things that I appreciate is I've had a progressive career with the county. So I didn't come in as a director. I came in as a secretary and by the grace of God have had and thankful that I have had a progressive career. So what I'm, we are, Human Resources, we try very hard to be innovative. And a stunning issue that is going on right now with the Corona is childcare. And I'll be bringing something to the board for you all's consideration in how we can better manage that, because we have so many employees who are really struggling to provide childcare in this COVID-nineteen environment. I definitely respect the board's questions, and being in the hot seat is part of being in this particular role. But to answer your question, Chairman, we went through the questions and concerns that the board had at the initial presentation. I brought that to the board. I did speak with the industry leader today who works at a national level. She posed questions, you know, I've got the answers to that and submitted it to the board. So we have done due diligence in addressing the questions that the board and the concerns that the board has. One of the things that the gentleman did not say is one of my glaring questions was, what drew you to us? Because I feel that Clayton County employees and Clayton County citizens, we deserve the very, very best. So what drew you to us? And they actually have a relationship with the board and with the Clayton County Board of Education, and they actually referred them to us. Because that was my, that was my question, what drew you to us? What's unique about us? Because I don't want, you know, us to be taken advantage of. As the HR director, I feel protected of the employees, and I think the majority of employees will agree with that. But to answer your question, yes, sir, we vetted it as best as we could.
How long have you all been working for the school system?
We've been working with school systems since January twenty-twenty.
January twenty-twenty.
Yes, sir.
Any problems?
No, sir, no problems.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to say, Ms. Ambles, thank you for your comments. However, Mr. Chairman, we will have offline conversation. But as we've already stated here today, regardless of the fact that they are doing business with the school system, the school system may do what they want to do, but we have a different set of liabilities as a government entity. We need to be very careful, once again, of entering into an area and to use a subject line statement of have you been vetted? We're not subject matter experts in the banking area. Again, we have access to credit unions. We have provided our employees access to credit unions. That is where banking should lie, not in the area of Clayton County government. We are here to offer a service to the citizens of Clayton County and to the employees. But at the end of the day, we have to be very careful of entering a space of great liability. And again, we cannot make a decision based on what one other agency or one other school system does. We have to make decisions that are best for us as a Clayton County government.
Any other questions or statements?
And one last thing I'll add to alleviate any concerns of involvement. One disclosure and something that we make sure to reiterate and reinstate with everyone, the partners we work with, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, Rollins Pest Control, Clayton County Board of Education, is that Viva is not a product that is given by or endorsed by any employer. Rather, it's simply a financial option that is available to employees in the event that they need to cover unexpected expenses, consolidate existing expensive debt, or catch up on bills. And so we really hope to be an option for employees and hope to be able to serve employees of Clayton County government.
Can I?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Can I ask one more question, Chairman? Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically, because folks' credit scores drop because they're not paying their bills on time or missing payments. A client of yours gets, misses a couple of payments. What do they do? Do they refinance that loan for additional months? And is there a fee for them doing that?
We do not allow for refinancing of current loans. The only way to take out a second loan is if they pay off their existing loan with Viva.
Okay, well, if they can't, if they missed payments, they can't pay it off, so then what happens?
Yeah, and so we have a forbearance policy that enables for people to either take a pay holiday if they've been experienced by COVID-nineteen or to have half payments for up to three months to get back on their feet and to catch up on things. There are circumstances where people do not pay back and are unable to do so. And in reporting to the bureaus, we do help to build people's credit score. There also are situations where if people can't pay, we have to report in all circumstances.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes. What kind of obligation is this to the county? Do we have any obligation if something comes up? And I think I'm, well, anyway, whoever wants to answer that. And if we do, how long is this relationship with the county and Viva? Is there a time limit, some kind of contractual agreement?
Great question, and there is no contractual time agreement required. There's also no integration or administration required. Because our loans are based on employment, the only thing we request is just a basic file of employee census data so that we can verify an applicant's employment information. And then other than that, it's just a matter of us providing custom materials to promote awareness of this financial option. But there is no administration required and also no liability to the county in the circumstance that someone leaves their job with a loan outstanding. In that case, we would work with that employee directly to set up a new repayment plan, and there wouldn't be any kind of involvement required from HR or the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin?
One more question. With the voluntary benefits, let me make sure I get this right. The current voluntary benefits, we switched to group plans specifically because it was my understanding at the time that the county government wanted to have more access to that plan. Is that correct? I guess this is from Ms. Ambles.
Ms. Ambles? Commissioner Franklin?
With the voluntary benefits particularly. Similar to what's been stated today, well, this is just providing information and providing access. Years ago, we did that with the voluntary benefits. But recently, within the past couple of years, we switched from just a basic voluntary benefit to a group voluntary benefit. Did we not?
We did.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Do you still receive questions about different types of issues that employees may have with something, with several of these plans that are deemed to be endorsed by our county?
Well, let me say this, when you're referring to we went to a group plan, you're talking about Colonial.
No, I'm not, you're being, no, ma'am, not being specific, but in general, we have several carriers. The point I'm making right now is I heard the comment stated that it's giving access. None of us can deny by the mere fact that this item has come before this board. Essentially, if we vote on it, whether we are signing off on a contract or signing off on a time period, essentially, this board is saying, I endorse this plan. And when employees have issues or as Commissioner Davis stated, can't pay it back, they're going to come back to our county asking us questions. And so that is a great concern to me. I just wanted to address that, but other than that, I'm ready to vote.
All right, so let's vote. All right, those in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three-two, it passes. Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item number fourteen, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One eighty-six, Resolution opposing the Election Integrity Act.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. I've got Resolution Twenty-One, Twenty-Twenty-One eighty-six, which is a resolution opposing the Election Integrity Act to any of the bills that would decrease or limit all eligible citizens from voting. To maintain this resolution as a public record, to deliver a copy of the resolution to the county legislative delegation, to authorize the chairman to sign any documents necessary to effectuate this resolution, to authorize the clerk to execute a test or seal any documents necessary to effectuate this resolution to provide an effective date and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Commissioner Hambrick, second the motion. Any questions?
I do have a comment.
Commissioner Davis?
I think with what has taken place through the last election cycle in Clayton County, stepping up and turning out the vote in the numbers that they did, it's not whether you're Democrat or Republican, it's about whether you want to have your voice controlled. And to me, for us to oppose this, we're opposing folk to take our county, make it a plantation again and have it, and give others external control. And I think this is why we need to support this bill and begin to also look at how do we begin to move forward with this bill already being signed.
Any other questions, comments? All right, here and none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous, Madam Clerk?
The next item is item number seventeen, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One dash sixty-four, Resolution Providing for and Authorizing Increase in Supplemental Compensation.
Yes, I have Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One sixty-four, which is a resolution providing for and authorizing an increase in the supplemental compensation of certain elected officials performing duties essential to county operations, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? All right, here and none. It fails due to a lack of emotion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, the next eighteen, nineteen, twenty through...
All right, first board appointment is to the Veterans Advisory Board. Mr. Ralph Zellum has resigned from the Veterans Advisory Board. New appointment will begin immediately and will expire June sixteen, twenty-twenty-four. Commissioner Davis?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Thomas Holt to that position.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Land Bank. This is an at-large appointment. This is an at-large appointment. Ms. Marie Grisby has resigned from the Land Bank Board. This appointment will begin immediately and will expire April 15, 2024. Any board member have a recommendation?
Can we hold that one, Mr. Chair, until next time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, hold it till the next meeting. Next board appointment is Green Space Program, Commissioner Davis' selection. County Code, Section 77 requires each board member to complete an ethics disclosure statement annually. A letter was sent December 14, 2020. A certified letter was also mailed to Mr. Kenny on February 14, 2021, and a final certified letter was mailed March 18. And Section 7076, subsection B, it authorizes sanctions against noncompliant persons up to and including removal from office in accordance with local and Georgia law. His replacement lies on, I believe this is Commissioner Davis. Do you have an appointment?
I do not. Can we hold that until the next meeting, please?
Madam Clerk, hold this till the next appointment as well. Next board appointment is to Water Authority, this is Commissioner Hambrick's selection. This appointment is to fill unexpired term of Ms. Vivian Baldwin. New appointment will begin immediately and will expire March 1, 2022. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board, I would like to appoint Ms. Emma Godby.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Marty citizen advisory board. This is Commissioner Hambrick's selection as well. The appointment is for the new Marty citizens advisory board. Chairman Turner, and each commissioner has two appointees. This is the first of two appointees. No, I believe this is the only one that's left for Commissioner Hambrick. Term begins on the date of appointment and will expire in two years. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to hold that, Mr. Chair.
All right, hold it for next meeting, Madam Clerk. Next board appointment is Commissioner Davis' selection. Term begins on the date of appointment. This is for the Marty citizen advisory board as well, and will expire in two years. Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Elena Reeves to that board, Marty board.
What was her name again?
Elena Reeves.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is also to the citizen advisory board, Marty. This is Commissioner Davis' selection. Term begins on date of appointment and will expire two years. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Ms. DeRola Sharon Phat.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, next board appointment is also to the Marty citizen advisory board, for AFL-CIO selection. This appointment is from the American Federation of Labor and Congress of Industrial Organizations. They are not ready to present selection yet, so please, Madam Clerk, hold till next meeting. Next is also a Marty citizen advisory board, Clayton State University's recommendation. The appointment is from Clayton State University and will expire in two years. I've heard from Clayton State University, and they want to recommend Maya Richardson-Echols. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, next is Marty citizen advisory board, Georgia Power Company selection. This is a four-year appointment. I've heard from Georgia Power, and they would like to recommend Ms. Charlotte Finn. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think one of you board members need to make the-
I'm making the recommendation, I'm sorry. I just didn't state it. On those, Madam Clerk, so I'm throwing it out there, and I'm also making the motion. So my motion is to appoint Ms. Charlotte Finn at Georgia Power's recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I don't know what happened to my sound, but I just want to ask the clerk, if she would review back, what was the result of 17? I think I was having difficulty at that particular time for item 17, please forgive me.
There was no motion. So it failed.
Oh, there was no motion. Okay, no problem, sir. My sound went out at that time.
Okay. Next-
Okay, no worries.
Next board appointment is also to the citizen advisory board. This selection's for the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. And it's a four-year appointment. This, the chamber is recommending, and I'm making a motion to approve, Mr. Steve Bernard. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Mr. Chair, before you take that vote, it's actually a two-year appointment.
I'm sorry, two years, it doesn't specify here. It says four years.
It says four.
It says four.
No, I think, well, at least according to what it has here, it says four members of the board are from different organizations.
All of these are two-year appointments.
Four members, you are correct, Mr. Reed. So this is a two-year appointment. And Madam Clerk, there should be, oh, it's ex-official position, so, Mr. Reed, we don't need to, if it's an ex-official member, we don't need, do we still need to ratify that?
Yes, all appointees to county boards need to be made by-
Okay, well, she does not have it on the agenda, so we will add it for the next agenda, for the next meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes board appointments.
The next item is item number 29, which is BOC 2003-0045, rezoners request to rezon RS-180 to PUD, Community Development.
Sounding the first zoning matter, this is a related case, two related cases. One, the first being read is the rezoning of the property, and the second is a related preliminary plat. Application number BOC 2003-0045, the applicant, Battle Law PC, on the behalf of Blackstone Investment Company, is requesting to rezon 25.17 acres of land from RS 180 Singer Family Residential to Plan Unit Development for a proposed new 100-unit Singer Family attached townhome community. Subject property is located at 1821 Creel Drive, with road frontage along the north side of Creel, near its intersection with West Fairville Road, just east of the Castle Gate subdivision and the Fat Shows Park. The planning commission's recommendation is for approval conditional, so, and staff recommendation is for approval conditional. The applicant has submitted in writing a letter requesting an additional table time to the May 18 hearing. So it'll be a 30-day hold. The applicant is probably in the audience, the virtual audience, to speak on this matter. See if we've got a hand raised. We do have the request in writing for the table for 30 days.
Is that Ms. Danielle? No, I thought you said they were online.
No, yeah, I thought Ms. Battle would be on there. I know she had some conflict in hearings tonight that she was going to try to do.
Okay, so the recommendation from the applicant is table for 30 days. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I offer a motion to retable this request for 30 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
To what day? The date, sir.
30 days of the-
May 18.
May 18. All right, Commissioner Davis, did you second the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, next.
Sounding the related case, LS-2006-0009, Preliminary Plat. The applicant, Battle Law PC, on the behalf of Blackstone Investment, is requesting a new 100-unit Singer Family attached townhome community, known as the towns at Fat Shows, to be developed on 25 acres of land currently zoned RS 180, that's under rezoning for a PUD. This request is related to the request sounded earlier. The subject property is located at 1821 Creel Drive. The planning commission's recommendation was for approval, the staff recommendation was for approval with conditions. Again, the letter that was submitted stands for this case as well, requesting tabling until May 18.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to table this request until May 18.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is item number 31, BOC 20101-0081, amend the land use map, MDR to GC, planning and zoning, and this is for decision only.
The subject case, again, is a three-part case, it has three related companion cases, the first being the request for a future land use plan amendment. The applicant, the case number being BOC 2101-0081, the applicant, Civil Consulting, is requesting a future land use map amendment for 1.5 acres of land located at 6403 and 6391 Highway 42, Rex, Georgia. The property has been requested to have a planned designation from medium-density residential to GC, general commercial, to allow a convenience store with gasoline services and related retails, tenant space. The subject property is located near the intersection of Fielder Road and Highway 42. And again, this request is related to a rezoning and a conditional use permit that will follow. The planning commission recommendation for this was for denial, staff recommendation is for denial.
All right, decision only, Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Four, one, Commissioner-
Three, two.
Three, two, Commissioner Hambrick and, I'm sorry, Commissioner Franklin and Commissioner Davis opposed. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. She said approve with conditions.
Yes. Please read the conditions. I'm sorry.
Yes, there are, there are conditions that are attached, and I will read this into the record. The- No, nothing for future land use, when it's when it's sound in the next case.
Oh, okay, should've said the conditions.
Okay, so we're good to go.
So the plan will not have any conditions attached. It would be under the preliminary.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Under the, I'm sorry, under the conditional use permit.
Okay, so that two, Davis and Franklin, no?
That's correct.
The next item is item number 32, BOC 20101-0079, it's a rezon RS 110 to GB. This is planning and zoning for a public hearing.
The second related companion case, BOC 2101-0079, the applicant, Civil Consulting, requesting to rezon 0.92 acres of land located at 6403 Highway 42, from RS 110 Singer Family Residential to GB, General Business, to allow a convenience store with gasoline service and retail tenant space. The subject property is located near the intersection of Fielder Road and Highway 42. The request, again, is related to the future land use permit sounded earlier. The recommendation from planning commission, from Zag, I'm sorry, is for denial, and staff recommendation is for denial. There are related conditions that staff recommended in the event this case is approved.
All right, is the applicant present?
I am.
Please come forward. Before you start, is there any minutes you'd like to reserve in rebuttal to anybody's opposition?
The remainder of my time?
So, okay.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Terry Boomer, with Civil Consulting Engineers, represent the seller-owner and developer of this property. I'm a project manager, first and foremost, and an engineer as well. The property that is under question is a interior piece. The piece on the corner is zoned GC already, so we're looking at the piece interior to this to be a sister portion of the tract, that piece being RS 110. We've, we've got a 50% developed area, impervious to pervious. We're going to leave 50% of it grass, green, open landscape. There's a 40-foot buffer along the rear property line and along the eastern property line, I do believe. Will keep those vegetated, planted to buffer standards as well. Development called for a 6,500-square-foot building, 4,000 of which would be convenience store, 2,500 square feet, which will be allowed use in the general commercial zoning districts of retail and/or restaurant. Any use excluded would be your common usual suspects, adult books, pawn shops, et cetera. We've got an entrance off of Fielder Road, we've got an entrance off of 42, and we'll work with the DOT naturally on both of those entrances, as even though the entrance off Fielder Road is under a county roadway jurisdiction, it also falls within that first 100 feet offset, too. So we want to line up with the driveway across the street of the existing convenience store and to eliminate any traffic and/or congestions, turning left, turning right, so that the opposing traffic, outbound movement traffic from our side, the outbound movement traffic from their side can see one another. The access on 42 will be your right-in, right-out only. There's a median in 42. We will further facilitate that driveway with a deceleration lane per GDOT standards as to prevent any rear-end collisions and/or impede the flow of traffic on 42. It should be noted that the existing intersection is signalized, and that our entrance off of 42 comes after the signalized entrance, assuming that the signalized entrance provides gaps and/or a common device for traffic. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
All right, we still have 100, a minute and 50 seconds left. Is anybody here would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? All right, here and seeing none, is anyone would like to speak in opposition to? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Once again, my name is Terry Bailey, I work with Taylor Farm Harper-Lumston, located at 3,400 Peachtree Road Northeast, Suite 1515, Atlanta, Georgia, 30326. I'll try to hit my points as fast as I can, so I know there's a lot of, a few neighbors I want to speak as well. But I'm just going to give a little background, I know you guys may or may not have read my letter, but, you know, I would work in convenience stores a lot. I usually represent them. I've worked with Mr. Boomer, have some opinion projects with Mr. Boomer as well. My issue with this project, however, is, you know, when I first take on a client, the first thing I ask the client, can I get this done? A rezoning, whatever type of zoning matter, I say, there's two things to look at. I said, can we get the staff to recommend approval based on the zoning criteria that the county or the city lays out? And secondly, can we get the community's support? If we can't get either of them, I say, don't even move forward. I'm dealing with something in Swanee right now, I said, don't move forward. If we can get one of the two, I said, hey, let's work on the other one, or let's see if we can use some conditions to satisfy either the neighborhood or to satisfy the planning staff. In this situation, there's a recommendation of denial. We've had 640 people in opposition that have signed it, and that's just at one gas station that they signed that. Now, I understand there's been some discussion about an oversaturation of gas stations, and maybe if we get a better quality gas station, it'll make other people step it up. Well, the problem is, how do you get a better quality gas station? You don't just approve a gas station, anything looks great when it's brand-new, but, you know, what determines what it's going to be like in 15, 20, 30 years is the type of operator. Well, you know, well, the type of operator comes with the type of trust that person brings to you. Also, what type of conditions can you put down? Now, when we go through a list of conditions, there's conditions that some you can actually enforce, and you have to think about what can we enforce, and what can you not enforce? So once you can't enforce, you're hoping that the operator will at least be able to work with you. Now, when I went to the meeting last time, I just wanted them to watch and see what was going to happen. I didn't think it would be even a discussion about approval. After the meeting, I spoke with some neighbors about some of the issues, concerns, because the best, the great thing about working with neighbors, when you're a developer, is that you can try to address as many of them as you can. You may not be to resolve everything, but you can at least try to attempt to resolve. So after the meeting, we're outside, and we're waiting, and the operator who's coming in there, and when the neighbor says, hey, can you speak with us? He says, yeah, I'll speak with you on this phone. Then he walks away. He, I've never seen that happen. I don't know, we don't know right now, we don't know if the, if the operator, is he going to be an owner-operator, is he leasing it out? Is he, I mean, he might be a great guy, creating a great store, then who's going to come in there? And then you have to look through all the types of conditions, what are the hours of operation? Are you going to be selling drug paraphernalia? Are you going to be alcohol? Are you going to be selling drug paraphernalia? Are you going to be alcohol, lighting, game machines, what hours? Those, this is the time, the neighbors have the time to address those concerns, look at the clock. But, you know, that, that's the whole importance of engaging the community. Now, um, not one person in the community is, is, is stepped up in support of this, and to have an operator that thinks that he can just bypass, you know, I mean, you know, I'm going to include my letter in the record I've already left for the planning staff, but it includes all the constitutional prefer, um, preservations. But to have him think that, okay, well, you know, it, it doesn't make good planning sense, because we have to amend the land, future land use, then we have to change the zoning, and then we have to get a conditional use permit, and then we're going to get a variance as well. You have no neighborhood support on this, and he hasn't even attempted to really work with the neighborhood on this. And to me, it's unfortunate, it's disappointing, and it's not only a slap in the face of the neighbors and people that are in opposition, but you as Commissioners as well. And that's why I came out here today. I also have a couple pictures, and the neighbors can talk about the conditions of, um, what goes on there more frequently, but just this last Friday, at, at one o'clock, there was a four-car accident, where these four cars were involved in an accident. And then at three o'clock, there was another two-car accident, which I have pictures of again. So once again, um, I mean, that's my, that's my issue. I guess, Terry Boomer, the engineer, he's a great guy, but I don't see, I don't know who's going to be operating. The neighbors don't know who's going to be operating. Is he leasing it? I mean, a lot of times, my clients say buy or redevelop, so that's part of our negotiation with the neighbors to help preserve the county going forward. So that's my issue right here, is that we have four applications simultaneously trying to be, you know, run down these neighbors' throats, and can we at least have a conversation? Can we at least make them do that? You know, like I said, for me, being a, being an attorney, I do zoning, alcohol licensing, things of that nature. One of the hardest things in my profession is to figure out how to work with these neighbors on issues that impact them. I have to put my, myself in their shoes to deal with these issues and be like, well, we may not be able to do everything, but come on, can we come to this resolution? They haven't made any attempt to do that. So for those reasons, that, that's why we're in opposition. I think I've hit the main points, but, I mean, the neighbors can talk about why they don't want it as well. But I want you guys to strongly consider that. Admin of them, force them to come back to the table. There's no rest. This is something that's going to be there forever if, if they go forward, you know? So, once again, even the conditions, I don't know what the conditions are, but that's opportunity for neighbors to do that. I mean, there's, there's so many things you can do. You can say, hey, you have to hire a couple people from the community. You know, or hey, you have to allow, um, people from the community to sell some of their products. There's so many things that you can use to your advantage if somebody wants to come into your neighborhood and do something. So that's what we have to do and consider. So I, I, I thank you very much for your time. I'm going to let the neighbors speak about, um, you know, some of their, their position. And I'm just going to leave this letter, which I already wrote you guys, and I'm also going to leave an original copy of the six hundred and forty signatures in opposition to a developer who doesn't even take the time to come. If he's here, I don't know where he's at. He might be, I don't know. But we haven't seen him to that, so here's your letter.
All right, anybody else want to speak in opposition? Come forward.
My name's Robert Quateroni. I live on Cabaret Trail, which is next street right down from where they, uh, proposed this convenience store. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-three, and I've seen two gas stations come in that area, and the one that's there now, and then you have one down at, uh, I believe it's Madd, not, not Madd, is it Maddox Road down there further? Within, within three blocks or less than a mile, you have about six gas stations, convenience stores, two dollars general-type stores, and you have the former Windex era grocery store with a shopping center. And the way the land is, is going to flow down the back of the development onto Fielder Road, onto Cabaret Trail, which drains down further. And, uh, I can, all I can foresee is a lot of water coming down there. Right now, that land is downhill, uh, back hill coming down towards Cabaret Trail, down Fielder Road, and everything else. So, uh, I don't think that that should be there. Plus, the way that the, the roads are built, uh, you have, have a accident on seventy-five and Fielder Road, that entrance they show right there is backed up every day. Coming off of Cabaret Trail, you can hardly make a left turn. And if someone's coming up Forty-two Highway and tries to get in there, they're merging in with people coming off of Fielder Road onto Forty-two Highway, we're going to have all kinds of accidents, and somebody's going to get killed around there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
May I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. My concern is for the independent businessman. There is already a large number of gas stations and convenience stores all the way from Rex Road to the county line. Another gas station is only going to diminish the profits of the other gas stations. And once you diminish the profit, and there is no profit, somebody is going out of business. And with an empty gas station, what you're going to have is another garbage dump, which we don't need. That's my issue, and, uh, that's what I'd like to say. You're running the small businessman out of business. You can put another business there, but not another gas station. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am with the red mask.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and to all. My name is Robin Purvis, and I am a resident here in Clayton County, twenty-seven seventy-six Rex Road, Ellenwood, Georgia. And I have a concern, as everyone prior to me have already stated, about all of the gas stations. But I would like to see, um, a boys' and girls' club or some more things for the, for the children to do. We have so many children in our community, and they really don't have a lot to do, especially the teenagers. Not only that, but we have, uh, eight, a number of eight gas stations, starting from one thirty-eight and forty-two, where Walmart is. We had Chevron, Texaco, you name it, we've got it. And we don't need, the traffic is pretty horrific. I live in that area. I'm up and down that forty-two all the time.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to come and rebuttal? Five minutes.
Thank you, and thank you to all who spoke. The only reason Terry likes me is because my first name is Terry as well, uh, but I do appreciate his kind words. Hey, uh, the client couldn't beat it here tonight. He's observing Ramadan, and he does send his regards. We'd be happy to meet with, um, a neighborhood group, but I thought we had a, and Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a community informational meeting to kick this off, and we've had subsequent meetings along the way, where the public have had ample time to express their concerns. I believe their concerns were, um, well-vetted, well-pointed out. They were stormwater, they were safety, they were traffic, and they were environmental. The, um, stormwater will be, per the George Stormwater Manual, there's a, if you flip over to the survey I saw up there earlier, it's a black and white sketch. Keep, keep, right, no? Anyway, there's a stormwater, um, pipe, eighteen-inch pipe in Fielder Road that is stubbed to this property to accept the stormwater. The black checkered board pattern line that you see on that driveway are underground detention, so the detention pond's not going to be in, become an unsightly collector of debris and shopping carts. We'll go to an underground detention, we'll detain it at the allowed rate. We'll provide for water quality, and we'll discharge into the stormwater pipe that is existing in Fielder Road. The safety concern, the new stores, the new marketers have higher, higher floor to ceiling, more visibility, more glass, open and spacious, wider aisle spacing, cameras and mirrors, staff trained, and a well-rounded relationship with the Clayton County Police Department. I think the new marketers, the new stores facilitate a much, uh, they're lighter, they're friendlier, they're, uh, a much more appealing place to do business in. And knowing that crime in any, um, establishment is a concern, proper precautions will be taken. The traffic, what we can do on a limited basis from our vantage point is to provide the deceleration lane to our right-in, right-out driveway, line up the, the entrances, stripe them, and sign them accordingly. And if there's any refreshing of the paint, thermoplastic paint of Fielder Road and/or Forty-two that we can do along our frontages or of the intersection, we'll be happy to participate with Mr. Lee Kelly in tra- Traffic and Transportation and/or the Georgia Department of Transportation to help improve what I hear is already an existing condition. And lastly, environmental, uh, the EPA and EPD guidelines have made tremendous strides since, um, the citing of the existing gas stores, gas stations that are out there. They're old, they're obsolete, and their equipment is old and obsolete. The new equipment that's going to go in are double-line tanks, underground tanks. The mechanical pump dispensers, individual pump dispensers have the, uh, the fume vacuums on them, the shut-off pumps, the, they have automatic shut-off pumps for emergency in case you drive off with that, you got something on your mind, uh, what's, what's for dinner, and you drive off with that handle sticking out in the embarrassment tail behind you, there's an automatic shut-off for that. So the environmental is taken and it's regulated, the state and federal guidelines. The, the traffic will work with both transportation departments. The stormwater's going to be per state and local ordinance, and the security is, is a combination of both the public sector and the owner of the store to work hand-in-hand, and in concert with Clayton County's finances. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bailey, is there conditions associated with this?
Yes, the conditions will be tied to the rezoning as well as the, the related conditional use permit. Should this be approved, I will read this into the record. The site should be limited to a convenience store with a gasoline service station and retail, and the gas pumps are limited to not more than five service pumps. All trash refuse areas are to be loc- are to be enclosed on three sides with brick and other masonry materials consistent with the primary buildings, building materials. No outside vending, uh, vending machines outside the storefront. Provide one trash receptacle container for each service pump, as well as at the store entrance. The maximum development site area is not to exceed one point five acres, consistent with the applicant's submitted site plan, dated twelve thirty-one twenty twenty. And the applicant must provide a fifty-foot vegetative buffer adjacent to all abutting residential zone properties. Those are six recommended conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bailey, would you also add to that, no, no covering on, um, you know, windows? No advertising and so forth?
Okay, we, we would put a condition in there that would say, uh, window, window signs and window coverings that, that, uh, limit the visibility to the store are prohibited.
Okay, got you.
That covers it.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for a vote, Mr. Chairman?
One second, one second, Commissioner Gregory. I think we already have an ordinance that, that dictates that.
Our, our sign ordinance would probably cover that, but you can put it in there just in case there's any amendment to the sign ordinance that does allow that, it would still prohibit that at that property.
Sir, on behalf of the applicant, are you in agreeance with that?
The only item that we can't do, and that's just due to, due to the geometry of the site, is the fifty-foot vegetative buffer. Code dictates a forty-foot vegetative buffer. Along the southern property line is where I'm having a problem with just pure geometry. Along the eastern property line, I'll, I can grant the fifty-foot buffer. But along the, uh, I'm sorry, along the western property line, if north is up, um...
Not interrupting, but I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Gregory, you're talking about signage in the windows that would prohibit it?
I'm fine with it. I was referring to Madeline's sixth condition.
Yeah, the sixth condition has a recommendation for a fifty-foot buffer.
Right, and, 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 and in return for the vegetative buffer, how about a fence, fencing?
We can include that a fence be provided interior to the buffer. That means the buffer will be on the outside, the fence will be on the inside, separating the residential properties.
Okay.
You're in agreeance with that, sir?
We can provide the fence. We have no problem with the signage, it's just the fifty-foot buffer, the geometry's just not there. Forty feet is there, where I can go to a thirty-foot marketer and it just...
Commissioner recommended that it be a fence instead of a vegetative buffer.
I can do a fence and a vegetative buffer.
That'd be good, both of them, yeah.
I think the, the buffer proposed by the applicant was at forty feet?
Yes.
Rather than fifty recommended by staff? So is that a modified condition, number six, saying provide a forty-foot vegetative buffer? And the second part of that sentence would be to, to include a solid fence, provide a solid fence at six feet in height, provided interior to the buffer? That would complete that condition number six.
Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, are we ready for a vote, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
A second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? Not a question, but a statement, and I would really hope that y'all would get what the homeowners in this community and really hear their concerns, and actually, just don't hear, but do something to address some of their concerns, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two have passed. It's Commissioner Davis and Franklin opposed. Next.
The next case is a related case, the conditional use permit for the, for the property. The applicant, civil, that case number being BOC two one zero one zero zero eighty. The conditional use permit permits the, the convenience gas store within the general business district following the rezoning that was just occurred. The applicant, Civil Consulting, is requesting a conditional use permit in the GB general business district for a convenience store, for a convenience store and gasoline services with retail space on one point five acres of land, located at sixty-four oh three and sixty-three ninety-one Highway forty-two, Rex, Georgia. The subject property is located near the intersection of Fielder Road and Highway forty-two. The parcel ID numbers are referenced on your agenda. The, again, this request is companion to the, the future land use plan amendment, the rezoning and the conditional use permit. The staff recommendations were for denial, and the ZAG zoning advisor group recommendations were denial. They are, again, the, uh, the recommended conditions. Should the CUP be approved, the conditions with mural, the conditions under the rezoning, which are seven recommended conditions as referenced under the rezoning. I can read those into the record again if we need that, or we could refer back.
Just read them into the record again.
Okay. Those conditions are, the site should be limited to a convenience store with a gasoline service station and retail with no more than five service pumps. All trash, trash refuse areas are to be enclosed on three sides with brick or other masonry materials consistent with the primary building materials. No outside vending machines or vending. Provide one trash receptible container for each service pump at, and at the store entrance. The maximum development site area is not to exceed one point five acres, consistent with the applicant submitted site plan, dated twelve thirty-one twenty twenty. The applicant must provide a forty-foot vegetative buffer adjacent to all abutting residential zone properties. Interior to that buffer, the applicant shall provide a max, a minimum six-foot-high solid fence interior to the buffer. The seventh condition is that window signs and window coverings, coverings that prohibit visibility to the store is prohibited. Those are the seven recommended conditions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and again, Terry Boomer, Civil Consulting Engineers. We agree with the conditions, ready to the record by Ms. Bailey.
Do you have any statement before we go to public comment?
Uh, I'll just, I'll make the statement in reference to your statement.
How many minutes in rebuttal?
I'll, uh, one minute per rebuttal.
One minute.
I'll get with Terry Bailey, asking staff to give my name and number and address for the neighborhood to talk to.
Okay. Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll be very brief. Terry Bailey, address 3400 PC Road Northeastly, 1515, Atlanta, Georgia, 30326. I just want to officially incorporate the letter that I presented, that emailed you guys and I presented earlier in regards to his application as well. You know, I'll briefly, you know, incorporate the same comments I made before. You know, Mr. Boomer gave great, great technical responses and I like him because he's a great engineer. However, I just do not feel like they've done their job in addressing a lot of these neighbors' concerns. You know, the actions of, sorry, let me pull this down, the actions of the actual operator slash owner, as I mentioned, is unfortunate, is disappointing, and I think it really goes to the integrity of the developer. And, you know, the order talks about maintaining the health, safety morals and general welfare of the public. I just believe that the approval of this does nothing to further that. Like I said, for me personally, as an attorney, it was just, you know, when, I know he's been there being directed to meet with us because it sounds good and they should meet with us, but, I mean, we had the opportunity, not said we don't want to still meet with them, but the owner had the opportunity and to say yes and walk away and lie, he would lie one time, what's going to make him lie again? You know, what's going to stop him from lying again? So I think that's just, it's very unfortunate. It's very unfortunate, I mean, it's a lovely project, but I think it's unfortunate the neighbors have not really had the opportunity to really weigh in. I mean, the initial meeting that you have obviously doesn't get everybody, but that's where you have these meetings because you're able to see who really has issues, what their issues are. You don't just list the issues and then address them yourself or then email the commissioner or do whatever you want to do, email the planning staff and send them those things to address them. What you do is you talk to the people and especially when you know who it is. So it's very unfortunate. I respectfully respect you guys' decision. I respectfully, I respect it, but there's still an opportunity to vote again to have a second thought. And there's also various things you do too. So once again, this is not a situation where, I mean, the other gas station was approved. They had one approved that was recommended for approval from the planning staff because it was based on sound planning principles. But this application was not recommended for approval by anybody, not the neighbors, not the planning staff, not P&amp;Z, not anybody. So I'll leave the rest of my time for the neighbors to see maybe you guys give them one last chance, one last thought of this that could have impact. Once again, this is the gateway to a neighborhood. It's a gateway, it's in somebody's backyard, and that's just unfortunate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Excuse me.
My name is?
Sir? Yes.
Ms. James, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I didn't realize I would be given a great opportunity to have a second chance to speak on the same subject and adding to the overflow of businesses. My concern here is not against Mr. Boomer, but against what is going in. Now, I see that it has a possibility of passing and going in, but let me say this in respect to what you want to develop here, that any new construction of any kind in this county requires sidewalks. Not only required to give us connectivity in our county, but we are lacking in sidewalks, so anybody building a business ought to be able to build sidewalks. The other part that I would like written into the record of anybody's business opening up is that they keep it clean. Not once a week, I'm talking about the outside here. I'm only talking about the outside at this point. Not, the outside should be kept as clean as the inside, of which you have codes requiring how the inside should be kept clean, but you don't have codes of how the outside should be kept clean. And should be cleaned on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? All right, hearing and seeing none, Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd offer a motion to approve this petition with the conditions as read by the zoning administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, any questions? Statements?
I was just asking the applicant if he needed top or rebuttal.
Kind of skipped over that. Still want to utilize your one minute?
I'm good. Well, let me say one thing. Never thought I'd be in agreement with Mickey, but I am on this one issue. We'll put sidewalk in and we'll keep it clean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hambrick.
Hambrick, yeah, I have, on those conditions, I think on the first one, it was mentioned 40 feet vegetation or whatever, and I believe it was read in the second one, 50 feet.
No, is this a comment that it went from 50 to 40?
Oh, okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, two have passes, Commissioners Hambrick and Franklin opposed.
Oh, no Hambrick second to the motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Franklin and Davis opposed. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Next item is item number 34, VOC 2102-0091, to amend the future land use map to MDR.
Case number VOC 2102-0091, future land use plan amendment. The applicant LAC Partnership is requesting a future land use map amendment for 45.5 acres of land from general commercial to medium-density residential to allow the development of a 180-town home lot community. This property is located at 5640, 5650, and 5660, Highway 42, Ellamwood, Georgia. The subject properties are located near the Old Rex, Marl Road, and Moreland Avenue intersection. The parcel ID numbers are identified on your agenda. The recommendation from the zoning advisory group and the planning staff recommendations are for approval with 13 conditions. Well, this, I apologize to you, it's for approval. The conditions will be attached to the companion cases that will sound after the first hearing. The companion cases is a request for rezoning. It's for, is a request for rezoning, and that's where the conditions will be attached. Thank you.
All right, is there a representative or applicant present, please?
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you again. My name is Stephen Jones, the law firm of Mobovis-Coll-Birch-Medlin. Address 200 Ashford Center North, Suite 500, Atlanta, Georgia. Here on behalf of the applicant LNC Partnership, LLP. I'm accompanied today by Mr. Clay Wall, who is the CEO of LNC Partnership.
I'm sorry to interrupt. How many minutes would you like to save? I was.
I was getting, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal, and thank you for reminding me.
Yes, sir.
You have before you, Chairman, Commissioners, two requests, future land use amendment, future land use map amendment and a rezoning request. This is for a townhome development, 180 townhomes. Your planning staff has reviewed it and reviewed the exclusive criteria for evaluation of this request and the rezoning request under your zoning ordinance and recommend approval with conditions. The zoning advisory group did the same and recommended conditions. We have worked with staff, the zoning advisory group, and thankfully the district commissioners developed what we think is a concept plan and a list of consented-to conditions that we hope will provide a quality development and a sustainable development for Clayton County and the new residents of this community for years to come. Again, this is 180 townhomes. This is the revised site plan. Commissioners and attendants, I have a paper copy if you prefer. I can distribute that if that'd be helpful, if you prefer to look on the screen, just let me know.
We're good.
What we have here is, again, 180 townhomes. You've got two entrances on Highway 42. The townhomes in the front will be inward-facing with a 40-foot vegetative buffer as well as a fence. You've got two playgrounds proposed as well as a community garden. For traffic control, we have, through those discussions I previously referenced, imposed stop signs as well as a median break you see on that long, on the long road heading north and south. There's also, at the very bottom right corner, which is the southeastern corner, we've considered to itself imposed a 60-foot buffer as well as a fence along that buffer to help prevent indiscriminate access to the interstate. The majority of the other unused land is open space and a combination of wetlands and water features. The conditions, which we worked quite hard with staff, the group, the commissioner on, we think will also help ensure that the development is one that we can be proud of and that is viable not only for our off-taker builder, but sustainable for the residents. Those conditions, I will paraphrase, no more than 180 units as shown on the site plan. No more than 10% shall be rented at any time. An HOA shall be imposed. The HOA shall maintain all stormwater facilities and own them, subject to a later condition. The HOA shall also require individual trash pickup. The traffic calming devices and facilities that you saw on the site plan must be imposed. There shall be a community garden, a playground, and the tot lots. Prior to approval, we're also, again, another self-imposed condition that resulted from discussions, is erection of signs stating that overnight parking, on-street parking, shall be prohibited. There was some concern expressed by Zag about, well, do we want to prevent parking during the day on-street parking? And that might prevent visitors, but overnight parking is prohibited. So also, again, we referenced the 40-foot land strip buffer on Highway 42, a 6-foot privacy fence inside of that. Adjacent to, and number seven, adjacent to a contiguous parcel, which, Tom, would you give access to the site plan? We met with an adjacent property owner who expressed some concern about the development and came to an agreement with her that we would erect a privacy fence along the common border with her, and that's condition number seven. That's Ms. Johnson, she's in attendance tonight. Number, condition number eight, a 60-foot buffer along the southeasternmost corner. That's what you see on the site plan, running from the southern corner all the way up to that water control facility. All townhomes will be a minimum of 1,600 square feet and have two-car garages. And the front facade of them will have that mixture of materials that adds diversity to the facade and creates kind of a craftsman look. This is, number 11 is a staff requested condition, and that's just that all the parcels be combined by plat prior to this middle and final plat for this development. Number 12, visitor parking shall be developed as shown on this concept plan. And again, that's part of that on-street parking prohibition, just to ensure that there's a safe flow of traffic and that we provide adequate parking. Number 13, that relates to the zoning ordinance amendment that is pending regarding rental units. We self-imposed that condition to bring this development along with that, I believe, yet-to-be-adopted ordinance amendment. And then finally, 14 was a request by Zag number, and that relates to a phasing in of the maintenance obligations for those stormwater facilities so that the developer shall bear the entire expense of the decline, actually, under the HOA covenant. Shall bear the entire expense of maintaining those stormwater facilities until at least, until at least 80% of the townhomes are sold. And it goes 50-50 developer and HOA at 90%, 75-25, and then at 98% of total home sum. Then it's a final turnover. So we've worked really hard and think we've had a good collaboration with all the parties involved and would ask that, consistent with the recommendations before you and consistent with the exclusive factors for consideration of these, both of these requests, that you vote to approve it. With that, I'll answer any questions that the Chairman or Commissioners may have. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you again.
We'll get back to the questions, there's about a minute left. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of this request, come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Speaking in favor of the proposed construction, let me reiterate again, any new construction within the county needs to have sidewalks, both in the community and along any roadways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Got about 20 seconds, so you might want to speed it along.
My name is Jay Johnson, and my property is next door. And in the last meeting that we had, we had discussed a privacy fence, and I'd requested an 8-foot privacy fence, and then the number seven says it would be 6-foot.
So you requested a 7-foot, and they agreed to that or they agreed to 6-foot?
Number seven says it's 6 feet, or 6-foot height in here, and I'd requested 8.
The maximum height in residential area is 6 feet, that's the reason for that?
That's it?
So that's called?
That's the max?
Yes, ma'am.
And see, I didn't have a buffer, so I thought maybe they would consider a higher one.
But your time is up. It's 6 feet, though.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? All right, sir, would you like to utilize your two minutes?
Chairman, just responding to Ms. Johnson, there is a buffer, it's 15 feet as shown on the concept plan, and we'd be more than happy to consent to a condition requiring the buffers as shown on that plan.
Thank you. Ms. Pan, if you would, read those conditions into the record.
Yes, I would like to state that.
Hold on a second, ma'am.
This is only on the future land use plan, so there are no conditions associated with that.
All right, well, Commissioner Gregory.
Okay, yes, sir, I'd offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second? All second to motion. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, looking at the conditions here, and even though we are voting on this particular property, what we approve here can potentially affect properties moving forward in our communities. And though this project looks like a really good project, I have concerns about the number of units and having those different trash companies coming through. I know that as a board, we're still awaiting to hear back from staff on where we are with that initiative. But in the meantime, we understand with that many units, we're going to continue to get complaints about trash cans being out all times of day, but code enforcement will not be able to enforce the code that requires for trash cans to be pulled back because nobody will know when those trash cans are being picked up. So specifically on the HOA covenant, is that one trash pickup company? Or could it be two, three, four different companies within this area?
I believe we could clarify on the conditions that it should be under one company to provide that service.
Okay, good deal. And then the other thing is, is there a space for said trash can? Because code enforcement, again, or our county code does not allow for trash to be in the front of units. And once again, with this many units, you've got trash, trash cans, barrels that are going to have to pull all the way around. So is there accommodation made for that as well? Because based upon the way it's going to be designed, residents will automatically be in violation of our county code.
Certainly, Commissioner, there is not a space provided for in the front because these are townhomes, they're attached units, but since these will have a two-car garage, there will be space to store them inside of the garage?
Well, unfortunately, our county code doesn't allow that either. So let's just make a point to the board. So let's just make a point to the board of commissioners, we have to do something to where we keep in mind that when we're approving something, that it's in line with our current county code, so we may need to just revisit that. That's really all I have, that was all.
Any other questions, comments? All right, go ahead and read that.
Wait, one more, Mr. Chair. The other comment is, again, because this is not, this can affect other developments as well as we make this decision tonight, one of the concerns we also have is the fact that we just had to put in place stating that single-family detached homes cannot be for rental. But is there a condition in here, like I've seen in some of the other proposed items, or the percentage, I see a percentage, good deal. All right, thank you, I just wanted to revisit that. All right, that's it.
All right, let's take a vote, then. It's been properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
The next item is BOC 2011-0073, rezon from RM for 180-lot townhome community.
This is a related case, this is a related rezoning, there is a constitutional challenge placed on this by the representing applicant. It applies to both the fluke and the rezon that goes into the record. The agenda item number, BOC 2011-0073, the applicant, LNC Partnership, is requesting to rezon 45 acres of land located at 5640, 5650, and 5660, Highway 42, Ellwood, Georgia. Property is being rezoned from General Business District to RG 75, to, and RM, from, I'm sorry, from General Business District and RG 75 to RM multifamily residential for 180 townhome lot community. The subject property is located near the O'Rex, Marrow Road, and Moreland Avenue intersection. The parcel ID numbers are shown on your agenda. The recommendations from planning staff is approved with conditions, and the recommendation from the zoning advisory group is approved with conditions. And if you would note, the site plan that we have submitted to you for tonight is a revision from the site plan that would have gone in your earlier packet, the applicant submitted this on 4/20. So as I read the conditions, I'll substitute the site plan date for the new site plan that was submitted, that's reflective on the overhead. Okay. The, we'll still use the modified date, that's okay. The development shall be no more than 180 feet simple townhome units, the layout consistent with the submitted site plan dated 4/2021, not more than 10% of the units shall be rented at any time by homeowners. Number two, a homeowner association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas, and covenants regulate sustainable uses of structures. The homeowners association shall own and maintain in perpetuity all stormwater facilities, including but not limited to detention ponds. HOA covenants shall require individual trash pickup services provided by the same refuse service company. Number three, traffic calming devices and facilities, such as stop signs and median islands, shall be constructed in substantial compliance with the site plan dated 4/2021. Amenities areas, number, condition number four, amenities areas shall include a community garden, playground, and tot lot. Condition number five, prior to approval of the final plat, signs shall be erected in the development informing the public that overnight street parking is prohibited. Condition number six, provide a 40-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Highway 42 road frontage. This buffer shall be internal, and provide a minimum 6-foot-high decorative privacy fence that will screen the rear yards of the townhome units from the right-of-way. Condition number seven, provide adjacent to parcel number 1271C8005, which is represented as 5674, Highway 42, a 6-foot-high minimum privacy fence along with a 15-foot undisturbed buffer. That's number seven. Condition number eight, a natural buffer of 60 feet shall be provided along the southernmost eastern corner of the property, as shown conceptually on the site plan dated 4/2021. All townhomes shall have a minimum unit size of 1,600 square feet with a minimum of two-car garages. All homes shall have a mixture of two of the following architectural materials on the front facade, brick, stone, fiber cement, board, cardit planks, or stucco. Vinyl shall only be permitted to be used in the E's and S's. The parcel numbers identified on your, as in the conditions, shall be combined into one final plat. Those parcel numbers are 12171C8004, 1217C8007, and 1217C8008, shall be combined into one final plat. Condition number 12, provide visitor parking as conceptually shown on the site plan dated 4/2021. Condition number 13, no developer or builder shall develop or construct a new residential lot or house in its subdivision for rental or lease purposes by the developer, builder, or any entity having a business relationship with the developer or builder. The subdivision plat shall be annotated on the cover sheet stating no rental lease of lots or houses. The, this, with the assertion of the developer and builder's name and the blank line stating that on this annotation, shall be one of the conditions of the plat approval. Condition number 14 refers to the stormwater maintenance of the HOA, stormwater facilities, and the development shall be maintained at the decorant, at the decorant's sole expense until 80% of the townhomes and the developments are sold, at which time the decorant will be responsible for 50% of the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities, and the HOA will be responsible for 50% of the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities. The second part of that will be 90% of the townhomes and the development are sold, at which time the decorant will be responsible for 25% of the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities, and the HOA will be responsible for 75% of the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities. And lastly, at 98% of the townhomes sold, at which time the decorant will no longer have responsibility for the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities, and the HOA will be responsible for 100% of the cost to maintain the stormwater facilities. These are 14 conditions read into the record. Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'll incorporate my name, contact information, and comments from the prior application, I just want to make one clarification. The concept plan that you have today is the concept plan, it has not changed since the zoning advisory group, so we would ask that the conditions imposed revert back to, say, 4/5/21. I just want to be clear that we haven't made any changes since then, everything's still the same.
That's fine with staff.
Mr. Clay, I would also like to ask, would you add? I saw some condos in Stockbridge the other day with cage air conditioning units on the front. We don't want that. So Ms. Madeline, however you can phrase that, no cage air conditioning units on the front?
Should be located at the rear.
Right, we can add a statement that all air conditioning units serving, each unit shall be located to the rear of the property.
Okay, and also, the retention ponds be fenced?
Were the comments in regard to the detention pond and the fence? The other, it's required, it's required that the detention area be fenced as part of the stormwater ordinance.
Okay, okay.
So we will add a 15th condition to address the fact that the individual air conditioning units shall be located to the rear of the townhome units.
All right.
And all electrical portions of that. Yeah, in addition to that, we don't want to see the electrical meters--
Meter box.
And the meter box that's going to be attached to the house, as well as the air conditioning units, so we'll attach those together, if that's okay.
Okay.
You in agreeance with that, sir?
Yeah, what Mr. Wall's saying is there may be, could we say a prohibition on them being on the front, because there may be a situation where they have to be on the side?
Excuse me.
That would be our only request of modification of that condition, just because feasibility issues, especially with the ones backing up to adjacent properties.
You go, Doc, Commissioner Gregory.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So we'll modify that condition to say that the air conditioning units and the, air conditioning units should be to the rear, and the electrical meter boxes shall not be on the front of the units.
Well, he said that the air conditioning may be on the side.
No, no, just the meter boxes.
Okay, 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 okay.
The meter boxes could be on the side of the building, but the air conditioning units will be to the rear.
Okay.
All right, sir. How many minutes in rebuttal?
Just two.
All right, two. Do you have any additional comments?
I'll field any questions that the chairman or commissioners may have.
Okay, well, we still need to have our hearing, so anybody want to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition?
Surprise.
No surprise. Okay. Would you like to utilize any last words?
Thank you for having us, an opportunity to appear before you all again. We just ask that you approve this with the conditions just read by staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve this petition with all the read amendments.
All right, and we definitely will not make her have to reread all of those conditions. So there was a total of 15 conditions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and they were agreed upon by the applicant.
That's correct.
All right, so there is a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hambrick, second to motion, any questions, comments? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, issue unanimous.
Chairman, Commissioners.
Next item is item number 36, BOC 2012-0077, CUP to allow tractor and trailer sales and storage.
Case number BOC 2012-0077, the applicant, Latonya Molet, is requesting a conditional use permit in the HI Heavy Industrial District for tractor and trailer sales and storage on 7.06 acres of land. The subject property is located at 7535 South Lake Parkway in Jonesboro, Georgia. Parcel ID is identified on your agenda. The staff recommendation is for approval with conditions, the zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval with conditions.
Applicant present.
Hi, I'm Latonya Molet, Conyers, Georgia. I agree with the conditions of the planning and zoning for the property.
Would you like to reserve any minutes in rebuttal, should somebody oppose you?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Continue on, please.
I agree with the conditions set by planning and zoning for the use of the tractor-trailer sales business that I'd like to have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody here would like to speak in opposition to applicant's request? I mean, in favor, I'm sorry, in favor. That's why I got you, Mr. Reed, earning your money today. Anybody want to speak in favor of?
Favor of?
Yes.
Again, I request to remove my mask.
Yes, sir.
Ms. James, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. With this facility being located in a heavy industrial zoning area, I wish to approve Ms. Molet's petition for her business. However, I want to reiterate, and the reason I reiterate again about sidewalks is I've mentioned this many times, and commissioners, you've had the opportunity to question these people or to add to the conditions of our needed sidewalks. Neither you, Mr. Chairman, or respectfully, other commissioners, none of you have spoken about the connectivity for the sidewalks and responsibility for keeping the front of your area clean written into the conditions. And that is the reason I keep coming up here, trying to make a point about things, if you would just not listen to me, but there's many people who give up hearing and have 30, your 30-minute public comment, mention these things over and over and over again, and there's never a meeting about code. I hear you want to change code, and hearing some codes at work sessions, but changing things so that with, that every new building have sidewalks in front of it, or new constructions in housing have sidewalks, and responsibility for keeping the areas clean. That would alleviate all the problems that you keep hearing about if you would make people be responsible, they're responsible to pay the IRS, aren't they? They should be responsible for keeping their area clean, and responsible for safety of people walking past their business. I hope at this time I've made an impression. Thank you very much for your time.
Let me just state this, Mr. Garber, our code requires sidewalks for new construction anyway. Our code requires new, new construction within our code requires that sidewalks be built, so it's not that we have to write it in there, it's already within our code that that needs to happen.
Why didn't you tell me?
Thought I told you a long time ago.
I didn't hear you.
Okay, well, we'll get together later.
Well, you'd figure if I brought it up again, I didn't hear you back.
I just like hearing your voice, Mr. Garber. We've got that relationship, so we're good.
Yes, sir, we do have a relationship.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Ma'am, you'd like to utilize your last two minutes?
In regards to Mr. Gardner?
Garber.
Mr. Garber?
That's okay, I'll be called many days.
I agree with you, sir. I do plan on keeping the property clean, and I want to make it as attractive as I can, because not only do I want to sell trucks, I like to hold sales and customer service seminars in my conference room for young people to introduce them. I've been selling cars, I started in 1988 selling cars, and customer service has gone in a whole different direction right now. So that was something I was speaking with the ladies in the office that I'd like to introduce and do as well, is have customer servicing seminars along with, to teach them how to sell cars and trucks, because that's another area of employment that young people don't really consider that you can actually make a decent living in, whether it's real estate, cars, trucks, something, you can earn a good living in sales without having to have a degree. So that's something I want to bring to Clayton County as well. But I will keep my property clean, and I will do what the Planning and Zoning Commission advises. I'm all set, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are the conditions to this?
Yes, there are three recommended conditions, both supported by planning staff and the zoning advisory group. Conditions read. Number one, all truck and car parking spaces must be paved with stripe. Parking areas shall not be expanded to encompass existing landscape and vegetated areas as depicted on submitted site plan. Provide a 10-foot-wide, wide internal landscape strip adjacent to South Lake Parkway. Number three, must adhere to all county codes and regulations pertaining to site development, except where we can be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals or any authorized agency. Those are three of the recommended conditions.
Commissioner Davis.
We do have some issues over there. One, and everyone's speaking of sidewalks, we have one small sidewalk strip, which is at the corner. The problem is, we have a high school right there in Jonesboro High School, we have an academy right across the street from there in Crestwood Academy, we have Jackson Elementary School, and we also have, I think it's a Mount Zion daycare. We have Jackson Elementary School, and we also have, I think it's a Mount Zion daycare. Plus, we've got five, I think five, um, apartment homes up the street with two townhouse facilities. We have a high pedestrian, um, a high pedestrian traffic flow there. And what concerns me is our children within that community and walking. On that side of the street, there are zero sidewalks on that side of the street that we've got to begin to look at as well. For that, I have to recommend denial on this.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. I got a question, though. Exactly where is this? I can't tell from this picture, the location of it.
It's, it's right up the, it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, it's on South Lake Parkway. If, um, there's the, the, right, the building is here, so the school would be to the right, across the street.
Caddyhorn.
And then, um, on to the left, there are trucking facilities as well surrounding the entire building because it was already a trucking facility, maintenance and drop lock parking. I'm just getting a C U P to add sales on to it. So, it was already doing what I want to do. As far as seeing kids walking, I have seen teenagers and stuff walking to school, but we've never, there haven't been any accidents, no incidents. You can check county records for that. I haven't seen any. I wish I could put sidewalks out there. I can't do it, but, um, it's already doing what I want to do. All I wanted to do was just add a sales aspect to it. I mean, I would like to sell trucks. I'm, I know at this point, it's a new business that I'd have to build up, so I'm not going to have a hundred or fifty, you know, it's not going to be huge like that. It's a starting point, but I understand your concern because I have a high school student myself, so I understand. Um, and I respect that, but at the same time, the area is already doing what I just wanted.
Yeah, and I understand that. And then also, too, the Board of Education has their bus depot right next to Jonesboro High School. So, we're talking about increasing the traffic flow on that road tremendously, um, right there, um, for that. And so, that's why I have to recommend denial on this.
You now have the questions, comments? All right, those in favor of denial, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous. This tonight. Next.
Next item is item number thirty-seven, B O C twenty-one oh-one dash zero-zero-eight-three, the C U P to allow a home cottage food business.
Case number B O C two-one zero-one zero-zero-eight-three, the applicant Angelique Wallace is requesting a conditional use permit on point four-one acres of land currently zoned R S one-eighty, single family. The subject property is located at ninety-five fifty Tyler Terrace, Jonesboro, Georgia. Request is for a home cottage food, home bakery business. The subject property is located within the St. Andrews subdivision. The parcel ID is referenced on your agenda. The recommendations of planning staff and the recommendations of the zoning advisory group is for approval, conditional with one condition.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening to everyone, chairman, commissioner.
How many minutes would you like in rebuttal, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
How many minutes would you like in rebuttal to answer any questions if somebody should oppose?
Three.
About three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
All right, I'm Angelique Wallace, and I'm here requesting a conditional use permit for a home bakery business. Um, my purpose for this business is just to bake, um, baked goods at my home and sell them off-site away from my home to my customers. Um, I have no plans of doing any marketing signs in my yard or anywhere within where I live, and that's pretty much it. I just need to start a baking business.
Okay. All right. Is anybody here in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garber.
Please.
Yes.
You already got it, I think. Okay. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, coming from a small business family myself, I will always speak in favor of entrepreneurial ship. And entrepreneurial ship starts at home. I support this woman in her business of what she wants to have up until, up until it once becomes a nuisance to neighbors surrounding, and they should be able to petition back here again if it should become a nuisance. And at that time, she, she hopefully will have made enough business that she can either rent or own in a commercial area. I hope that her business is so successful that she does become a nuisance in her neighborhood.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of? I mean, you can't top that, but anybody else like to speak in favor of? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, chairman, commissioner, other board. My name is Janie Law, and I do live in St. Andrews subdivision. And the thing I have with that issue is sewage and water. Our water pressure.
Now, we're talking, ma'am, for those in favor of. Are you in favor of it?
No.
Okay, well, hold what you have for just a second. You, you don't have to go anywhere. Just sit right there. Is anybody else who would like to speak in favor of? Okay, opposition to? Yes, ma'am.
My concern is the sewage and water. Our water pressure is already low based upon Clayton County regulations. And for that type of business, how much of a quantity is she going to be producing a day? That's my concern. If it's a large amount, then it may affect also the resident in the subdivision. Those are my concerns.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And we will allow her to come up here and answer that. Is there anybody else want, like to speak? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Yes, ma'am, if you would like to come back for your three minutes.
So, to answer her question, um, all of that, I can't really give her a good answer on because once I start, I don't know how many people will start ordering based off me having the permit, but I can say it will be fairly small. Um, it's just me, so I can't make too many large of anything at my home. So, I hope that does answer her question and kind of give her a little ease because right now it's not going to be large quantities of anything until I do some marketing and try to just get my clientele up.
Got you. Anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to my request.
Okay. Thank you. I believe this is, uh, Commissioner Franklin's, uh, district. Is there conditions?
Yes, there are, there are two conditions actually to read into the record. The requested conditional use is limited to use by the owner, Cherie Feature, or Angelique Wallace. A property ownership change will result in the discontinuation of the granted conditional use permit. Second condition is that no transfer of goods to customers shall be conducted on-site.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, um, thank you to everyone that has spoken today, including the neighbor regarding the water pressure. I would advise you to please contact Clayton County Water Authority, um, regarding that. Uh, and then also, um, thank you to Mr. Garber for the well wishes to a business, a potential business owner in the district. I wish that we could add another condition, though, and that is, once you do grow your business to a point that you will open up and actually standalone space someplace in Clayton County since we're starting here, but we don't want to put that as a condition, but I can at least state it. And then in regards to becoming a nuisance, hopefully, um, you would just, um, be cooking some really good, I guess, sweets, right? That's what you're cooking, bakery?
Yes, ma'am.
Because the only nuisance I see is if you start burning things up, but we hope that doesn't happen. At any rate, we are going to approve this as far as I'm concerned, and I'm just glad that you came to the board to do this the right way. Too many folks do businesses in their homes and don't do it the right way, and for you and, um, and I mean, both Venture and Wallace did do it the right way. We applaud you, but I make that recommendation that we approve it.
All right, that's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second it.
Probably move to second. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, um, now that we approved it, can you please bring the sample bag?
We haven't approved it yet, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry.
All right, here, and those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. Issue unanimous. Now it's been approved. I guess she wants some goodies.
I will be sure to bring each and every one of you, pound, paper, whatever you like. Just let me know.
Okay, make sure you believe it with my name because, Mr. Chair, I eat it all up. Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is item number thirty-eight, B O C twenty-one oh-one dash zero-zero-eighty-eight, is the C U P to allow for warehousing, recycling, and storage facility.
Case number B O C two-one zero-one zero-zero-eight-eight, the applicant V C R Realty Group is requesting a conditional use permit for, on twenty-one point twenty-four acres of land currently zoned H I Heavy Industrial. The subject property is located at six zero seven five Leaves Mill Road, Forest Park, Georgia. The request is for warehousing and recycling services and storage of metal within an existing industrial building. The subject property is located near the intersection of Tara Boulevard and Leaves Mill Road. Parcel ID number is identified on your agenda. The recommendation of planning staff and the zoning advisory group is approval with conditions. There are eight stated conditions recommended.
It's the applicant.
Uh, chairman, commissioners, uh, my name's John Cohen. I, uh, live at thirty-seven seventy-nine Ashford Trail in Atlanta. And, um, I accept the conditions, uh, for the approval. The site's been a, uh, recycling facility for the last eight years. We're not recycling.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. How many minutes would you like to save in rebuttal?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Please continue.
So, uh, the, my client, C N Y Global, who is going to be operating the facility, they have eight facilities around the country. They'll be bringing jobs to the area, skilled jobs and unskilled labor. It's clean business.
It's not yet?
No different than what's going on there now, only it's cleaner.
Okay. All right, is there anybody here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody would like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Any last things you want to say within your last three minutes?
Um, I would appreciate getting approved for the operation of this business.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Madeline, if you'll read the eight conditions into the record.
Yes, first condition being, the applicant must comply with the site plan submitted to staff on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. The applicant shall combine parcels prior to receiving permits for development. All truck and car parking spaces must be paved and striped. Condition number four, a solid wall or fence of six feet in height must be provided around the entire perimeter of the subject property. The storage and collection of salvage materials shall not exceed a height of five feet. Condition number five, must obtain all necessary permitting from the Georgia Protection Division, E B D, before obtaining a business license. Condition number six, must provide a ten-foot landscape strip adjacent to all road frontages. Condition number seven, all outside storage shall be located at least fifty feet from the property line. Condition number eight, must adhere to all county codes and regulations pertaining to site development except for where relief is granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals or other authorized agencies. Those are eight conditions.
All right, Commissioner Hamburg.
Uh, yes, I would like to make this, uh, comment to, um, the presenter that with those jobs, if we would make a special effort to try to hire Clayton County residents. And, um, right, okay. And also, in, in, uh, in, in tune with, uh, Mr. Garber, if we would, um, I would like to ask the, um, presenter to take back to his client, uh, keeping the property clean, especially the front, the frontage of the property, because we have a problem with Leaves Mill Road cleaning and all. And if, uh, each company will do their part, that will, sure will help with that. So, if, uh, you all would take that into consideration. Okay.
If you could come to the podium and just say you agree to it.
Uh, yes, ma'am. We will, we'll definitely keep the property clean. It's in our, uh, to our benefit to do that. Um, also, um, we would certainly hire people that live in Clayton County. We want people close to the job and able to get there. I don't believe Leaves Mill is served by any public transportation, so, you know, we need people that, you know, live in the area.
Okay, and as far as keeping the property clean, okay, you may keep the property clean, but the frontage is, uh, what, uh, people see passing by and all.
Right.
Make a special effort to keep the frontage, uh, clean also.
We, we'll certainly do our part. This particular property where we're located actually sits behind a property that faces Leaves Mill Road, and we have an easement to cross their property in order to get to our property.
Oh.
And we're actually downgrade from the street. You can't even see our property.
Yeah.
Which is.
Okay, so is that, does that big parking lot belong to you all or belong to the other people? Because there is a nice parking lot there.
The parking lot that's on Leaves Mill Road that, that affronts Leaves Mill Road?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's not ours.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's actually a truck repair, large truck repair operation.
Oh, okay, well.
And they keep it clean, too. It's a very clean.
Yeah, it was clean, it was clean when I, I did my visit, so I appreciate that.
We actually sit behind it. You can't even see ours unless you drive through their property.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, I would like to, um, recommend that this request, uh, be, uh, passed, be okay with, with the conditions that were read by zoning.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions, comments? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item is item number thirty-nine, B O C twenty-one oh-one dash zero-zero-eighty-nine, C U P to allow for an expansion of an existing church.
B O C two-one zero-one zero-zero-eight-nine, the applicant Bishop D L Rogers, Christian Outreach Evangelistic Church, Inc. is requesting a conditional use permit for seven point seven, seven point seven-nine acres of land located at sixty-one twenty highway eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia. This request is to, is for a three thousand square foot expansion of the place of worship to, to allow an existing, to expansion of an existing child daycare facility and to allow for future expansion of a fifty thousand square feet family life center. The subject property is located near the Myers Road and Highway eighty-five intersection. Parcel ID number is identified on the agenda. Staff recommendation and the zoning advisory group recommendations for approval with conditions.
See applicant's present.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and, uh, commissioners. Thank you for having us.
State your name for us and how many minutes in rebuttal you would like.
Uh, Bishop D L Rogers and, uh, probably about three.
Three minutes. Okay, set the time for that.
Uh, we were here to, uh, seek approval for our three thousand square foot expansion to our existing daycare building. And, um, after that, in the years to come, it'd be a future, um, expansion of a life center.
Okay. Anybody here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Robinson, sixty-nine oh-seven Apache Lane, Riverdale, Georgia. I reside in the Riverdale area, and my children have attended the daycare. They're twenty-three and eighteen now. And I have seen the daycare be a safe haven for many children and parents. It has been a great access to the neighborhood. It has been a great access to the neighborhood, and when they can service more children and more families, it is, it will be a great asset to Clayton County and Riverdale.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Any opposition? Bishop, would you like to close out with three minutes? Or any additional comments?
We would like to say, Mr. Chairman, that we would like, we will comply to the two recommendations and all of the applicant codes of Clayton County.
Thank you. Ms. Pan, if you would read the conditions into record.
Yes, the condition reads, the main facade of the building, condition shall match the materials of the main building, and should be conditioned to the building expansion as shown on the conceptual site plan received on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Condition number two, the property must adhere to all county codes and regulations pertaining to site development, except for where relief may be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals or other authorized agencies. Those are the two recommended conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hambrich.
Yes, let me say this, I have visited that facility in the past when my granddaughter was just a little something, trying to decide and all, and I did like what I saw at that facility and all with the training and development of the kids. Again, I want to mention that about the keeping the facility along with the new part of the building clean and all. Now, I do have a question, is that, is that expansion gonna be out to the side or is it gonna go back?
It's gonna go in the back, in the rear of the existing building?
Oh, okay, because I visited, I saw that, and I was like, okay, you can't go too far to the side because you have that, what, Mize Road? Mize Zero? Right, yes. Okay, with that, and with the conditions or whatever, I recommend approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Probably moved and second by Commissioner Davis, are there any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Thank you sir.
The next item is item number forty, BOC twenty-ten dash zero zero sixty-six, to allow an auto repair business.
Case number BOC two-zero-one-zero-zero-six-six, the applicant Ansel Hayden, on behalf of Louis Sensillon, is requesting a conditional use permit in the General Business District for an automotive repair business within an existing building on point three-two acres of land. The property is located at thirty-one ninety-two Pinola Road, Ellenwood, Georgia. Parcel ID number identified on your agenda. The subject property is also located within the Highway forty-two overlay district. Staff recommendation is for denial, zoning advisory group recommendation is for denial. The applicant failed to provide the adequate site development layout to represent how the property is gonna be used.
All right, applicant, come forward, state your name and how many minutes in rebuttal should you request.
I do the same, three minutes.
Three minutes, please sir.
My name is Ansel Hayden. I live in Clayton County. We have a thirty-one ninety-two Pinola, we build a building. The layout is for a mechanic shop. On the side here, you see where we put the parking of the cars, it's supposed to be clean, neat. So, we will be abiding by the rules of record enforcement and the Clayton County zoning. So, but now that's where we are.
Thank you sir. Anybody like to speak in favor to applicant's request? Anybody in favor to? Anybody in opposition? Come forward.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Simmons, fifty-four eighty-four Emily Circle. I am the HOA president for Sellers Creek. We are concerned about the business, we feel it's gonna be an eyesore, it's not gonna bring the type of business or things we would like to patronize into the community, and we ask that you uphold the denial suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else?
My name is Ernestine Roger Lyford. I reside at fifty-five thirty-eight Emily Circle, Ellenwood, Georgia, and we really don't want this business in our neighborhood because right across the street, right in front of the service station, there's already a repair car shop there with many cars, it's been sitting there, sitting there, and we know that's gonna happen there. So we don't want it in our neighborhood, we asking for the board to decline it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
Again Frankie Boyd, resident of the neighborhood, sorry we got out of order early.
You're fine.
But I just want to reiterate what I said previously, we prefer not to have this disturbance in our neighborhood.
Yes sir.
Appreciate that you voted down.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sam Williams, fifty-four sixty-five Emily Circle, Ellenwood. Just want to say, just by some chance, if it is approved, could he have some type of conditional uses where it's no cars for sale on the lot? Well, it can't be used as a car lot, because that's what I'm seeing when you go across forty-two. It's the same building, same look, same design, and all you see is for sale, for sale. So it turns into a car lot. No cars for sale or signs of advertising sales or some type of pave and not the gravel that's currently down there, or some type of condition, you know, some type of conditions where it's presentable. Because right now, if you look anything like the other ones are looking down forty-two, it looks exactly like a salvage yard, and that's what they're trying to put right in the same location.
Thank you sir. Anybody else, please?
My name's Jesse Blacksher, fifty-four fifty-nine Emily Circle, and I don't want to see far as the business in the neighborhood. Specifically, it says that an existing building, initially that was a residential home, and Clayton County used that particular home, they had erected a new building on that particular property now without permission thing, so to be considered and noted that it wasn't an existing building, it was somebody's home when I first came to the neighborhood nine years ago. So, they erected a new building now, so, and all sorts of construction is going on that, you know, that existing building that they're putting up is for, looks like a repair, and we just don't want to see it become an eyesore to our neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you sir. Anybody else?
Yes, my name's Bronson Lyper, I live at fifty-five thirty-eight Emily Circle in the Settlers Creek subdivision, and I would like for this to not happen because like you say, we already have the trucking business on one side of the street, and you got the repair business already there, and you also have the service station that's busy, and then back of the service station, they have a little portable car wash, it's very, very busy, so it's a pretty congested area already, and with the business added that he wants to get approved, it will just compound the situation. Wouldn't like to see it, so I have to say.
Thank you sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, James Lee at fifty-four twenty-three Emily Circle. Also, I would like to oppose the property as the folks before me said, you know, it's a complete eyesore. There is a place across the street, it's also a mechanic place, and there's just an increased amount of broken down vehicles, and that's what these type of businesses do, so I'd like to go on the record as opposing it. Also, there's a gas station across the street, they're washing cars, it's just not a good place to have it.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? All right sir, you can speak in your last three minutes.
I think what they're talking about, the gas station and the other shops, is irrelevant to what I'm doing, because they don't know how my place gonna be, so they can't assume it gonna be like the other place. So, I think that's a mistake.
Ms. Pan, are there any conditions?
No, there are no conditions with this denial, however, staff do have some standard conditions, should this be approved that I could introduce for consideration?
Okay. Commissioner Gregory?
Yes sir, Mr. Chair, I would like to offer a motion to deny this petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Mr. Reed, is there a need?
Yes, executive session for litigation only.
All right, I'll make a motion, go into executive session for...
One, one second, Mr. Chair, may I have a point of privilege, please?
Hold on, hold on, I was making a motion, Commissioner Gregory, I mean Commissioner Franklin, just can't cut me off.
No disrespect, I was trying to catch you before.
Please don't cut me off. My motion is going to executive session, litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
A question, sir? Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, please. I was trying to catch you, sir, before you got to that point, if you don't mind, and the reason that I was trying to catch you before you got to that point is because I wanted to read a very important statement. On this pass, on yesterday, unfortunately, we lost a very dear member of our community, his name was Officer Armando Mendoza. He was only twenty-two years old, his mother actually was a owner, a business owner, is an owner in our community. And considering the fact that we've all just witnessed the verdict, we need to make sure that we recognize, as you did so thankfully and graciously earlier, but I just simply wanted to take a moment to recognize the life of this young man, because he was one that was a true kind heart, he was truly an officer and a gentleman, and he looked forward to serve in our community. He did it with grace, and he did it with kindness, and in today's time, when a lot of our officers are having to take the flak for those that may not be doing the right thing, this young man always did the right thing. His mother and father raised him to be respectful, and he was truly a jewel in our community, and for that reason, I am recommitting my efforts, along with the Chief of Police, as well as our Sheriff, the DA, and the solicitor, to make sure that we do all that we can to make our roads safer here in Clayton County. This is actually the spot that unfortunately, we lost another officer early on, and so, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I was simply trying to catch you prior to dismissing us so that I could give that honor and that due to this young man, because he stepped up and he served, and he only served from September of last year until yesterday, and so, please keep all of our community in prayer, and keep the police and the Sheriff Office in prayer, because all of those men and women who sacrifice their lives daily are hurting. When they lose one, it affects everyone. So thank you for giving me this point of privilege, sir.
Yes, and those were important words that we all can agree to, so I appreciate your comments. We are adjourned. Not adjourned, I'm sorry, go into executive session. All right, let's have roll call, Commissioner Sonna Gregory?
I'm here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrich? Commissioner Gail Hambrich?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Commissioner Demont Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Franklin, Felicia Franklin? Commissioner Felicia Franklin? Madam Clerk show her not currently present. Motion to reconvene?
It's on move.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous, motion to adjourn, I'll make the motions, there's a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous, good night.